Yeah, I did.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being broadcast on WHCA and is also being recorded. As we start every meeting, if you could please join us for the pledge allegiance.
We're flying.
United States of America.
That is in public, in this space, void with hands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地， justice, law.
So we'll start with, since we have, well, we'll start with public comment. Do we have any public comment? We'll open that up. No? Okay, then you're good. Great. Then we will move right into the student advisory committee who is joining us tonight for their first presentation and report. Do you want to introduce them?
Sure, it's up to you. So, so, welcome, you guys. Congratulations on being elected. I'd just like to introduce you and wave your hand once I call your name. Anna Flynn is, and she was selected as chair by her peers. Celia Goyette, Emma McKeon, Riley Getchell, and Noah Roberts. So they will be your student advisory council through June, and then hopefully, if things go well, we will have some returnees once they do reelections. And I know we will have a few folks that that graduate, so they're off to a different place next year to be leaders. We had a, just to let the committee know, Ms. Byers and I met, the students and I were in person, and Ms. Byers was live on Zoom, and we talked about the agenda the other day, their role, and I think they're excited to be here today in the next coming months to share their thoughts about school and what we do in our district. So, open it up.
Should we introduce ourselves?
Yeah, and that was one of the things we actually talked about, too, so.
You want to introduce yourself?
On behalf of, yeah, who, Marcus Scriven, vice chair of school committee, Whitman resident.
Beth Stafford, Whitman, Merceda.
Michael Jones, school committee, Hanson.
Jeff Simonak, superintendent.
Chris Howard, school committee from Hanson.
Hillary Nigga, Hanson.
David Forth from Hanson, Whitman.
Don Byers, Whitman.
Michelle Bujalai, Hanson.
Stephen Boyce from Whitman.
And then on the phone, we have Fred. Fred?
Fred Small, Whitman.
All right. So I think we intended this to be kind of free-flowing and give you an opportunity to kind of share wherever you wanted to go, so we'll turn it over to you and, or turn it over to Don, and she'll get us going.
Sure. So in our Zoom, the students did ask, you know, what do we say? Of course, Jeff, Jeff and I said, well, we're not here to tell you what to say, but I think that question was more around, like, what's, what's happening here? And I said, you know, you are the voice of the student body, so you're more than welcome to share your feelings about school, if you have questions about school. Maybe the first meeting now would be a great introduction, so feel free to share something about yourself, even if you want to go back to your grade school or middle school, or just so we can get to know you as students, so feel comfortable that way, and then I know you'll come back in April, and maybe if you, you know, want to stay and listen to the meeting, it will formulate more questions you might have, so the more you listen, sometimes you form more questions, and, you know, we bless you. Thank you. And as committee members, we ask a lot of questions ourselves, so the old adage is never a silly question. So please, if you want to just someone, just say to someone, could you explain that? Could you repeat that? I didn't hear that well. Go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna add, you know, thinking back to when I first joined the committee, I don't think I spoke, you know, a couple of words for the first several, right? It was all listening, you know, and, and, so don't feel pressured to speak, but you know what I mean? We'd love to hear from you. But it's understandable.
Yeah. So maybe for those of you who are seniors, maybe you want to share what your, your career path or your inspiration is going on from here, so one at a time, if you wouldn't mind, up to the microphone, or? Want to get?
Do you mind just going up to the mic, because we are recording, so that way the people at home can hear you as well.
My name is Riley Getchell. I'm a junior here at Whitman, Hanson. I've actually spoken at one of these school committee meetings before, last June, right after plastic and polystyrene containers were banned in Whitman. I'm really glad that I could come back here. In my time at Whitman, Hanson, I've had a very positive experience being involved in a lot of different clubs, and I think this year it's been a bit of an adjustment, but I think it's going pretty well, getting back to almost normal. Thanks.
I'm Celia Goyette, and I'm a senior here at Whitman, Hanson, and I love Whitman, Hanson has a lot of great opportunities for students to get involved, and personally, I started a magazine at this school. It's called The What Magazine, and it's just a fun pop culture-like school information magazine, and currently, we have forty to fifty members that submit for us every month, and we print through the school and distribute through the school, and we get really good feedback on it from students.
Hi, my name's Anna Flynn. I've spoken at these meetings before. I really like it, because I like to use my voice. I actually have my own blog that I write on, because I like listening to people's opinions and writing about it and hearing from my peers. I also do three seasons of sports and a bunch of clubs. I love Whitman, Hanson.
Hi, everyone. I'm Noah Roberts. I'm from Hanson, and I'm a junior, and my experience with Whitman, Hanson, because I'm a junior, the first two years were a little bit off because of COVID, but since coming back this year, I've noticed, like, such a change of kind of the culture of the school in general, and I think everybody, all the students, have really realized that, like, things aren't as they really have been, and I'm looking to be able to reach out to the students and get their opinions on what could be changed to kind of bring school back to the lively culture it was. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emma McKeon. I'm a sophomore at Whitman, Hanson, and over the last about two years, I mean, it's been very different from a lot of school, but I've tried to be involved as much as I can, and it's been really great, and I'm just really excited for the next two years.
Can I ask a question? So you mentioned the magazine. How'd that start? How'd you get that mic, please? How'd that start? Because that's something that, I'm sure you brought that to somebody's attention, right?
Yeah, definitely. It was just like a crazy idea I had one day in school, and I talked to some friends about it and, like, saw if they were interested, and all of them seemed to be really interested in, into, like, submitting and creating it, so we actually went to Dr. Jones, our principal, and we brought the idea to him, and he helped us, like, create it, grab some advisors for it, and really get the club up and running, and we have, like, a Google Classroom set up like you would any other class, so that's a great way to communicate with other students, and anyone can join. The Google Classroom code is posted, and we put announcements on the school news to advertise for it, and a lot of people have gotten involved lately, which is really nice.
That's awesome. Great. That's awesome. Thank you for sharing that.
I think you keep copies right outside the office, right, in the box, so maybe if anyone wants to pick up a copy.
Great. So is there anything that you wanted to share with us in terms of questions? And it's okay, like, to, I think Don's point is, my experience has always shown that the best way to get through some of these things is an organic experience. I think when you try and force stuff, it doesn't work, so I think having you here to listen, understand, support, share is great. If there are things that you want to share with us, we'd love to have it, and if you're not ready to do that now, and you want to kind of save some of that for future meetings, that's fine, too, so, yeah?
I know that a lot of students have been asking this, and I also have the same question. We just got, like, report cards, but they're, like, quarter-two grades. Are we going to get, like, a semester grade? Because, like, I know CeCe and I, we're both seniors, and we have to send, like, our mid-year grades off to colleges. Are we going to get, like, an actual semester-one report card that has, like, the averages? Because on my quarter-two report card, all I see is, like, the hardcore quarter-two grades, not, like, anything added from my quarter-one grade.
That's a great question. I'm going to text this principal right now, and you'll have an answer tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. I heard there's something about, like, February tenth. I wasn't sure if that was like.
Usually, usually, you will get your semester combined, so you'll have your quarter, your quarter, and then there's a semester grade that folks need to send off to their, their schools.
Okay, thank you.
Usually that happens. But I'll find out for you. You'll, you'll know tomorrow, Anna.
Anyone else?
It's really hard when you're a senior waiting for those grades.
That's a fun process, I'm sure, applying for schools.
Yeah.
So I know this is, like, very recent news, and we'll probably discuss it later today, but during the school today, everybody seemed to be talking about this new mask mandate and what everything is going to do with this. Some people are very for anti, or like, not having to wear masks anymore. Some people feel as if we should still wear masks, so I just wanted to know, like, how this council kind of has an influence on that, and maybe what you guys were leaning towards.
So I'm going to cover that in my COVID report today, just about the, the governor's announcement and the commissioner's announcement, and make some recommendations to the committee going forward, based on the, on the DESI policies and the Mass Department of Public Health policies and the recommendation. So stay tuned for, for another fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
And folks, when you're up there, speak up a little bit. Mr. Small's having some difficulty hearing, so maybe use the, there's two mics there. The mic attached to the, to the podium is for TV. The other mic illuminates your voice a little bit.
So I know that in the past two years, or maybe it was just last year and this year, we've had free lunch at our school, and I've noticed that it's great for a lot of students who struggled to bring lunch, but still couldn't afford to get to buy lunch every day and didn't qualify for free lunch, so it's a great resource for students this year. I was wondering if the school committee or the state chose whether to keep that, or what the plans are for next year as about, as to lunch.
So right now, that's a federal government initiative, and, and actually, great question, because I have my director of food services in the second row back there. So Nadine, what's the plan for next year? Are we looking at free from the Fed?
Wow, excellent.
I'm a mind reader today. This is great.
Project Bread, School Nutrition Association, School Nutrition Foundation, other organizations are trying to pass free lunches forever. We're supposed to have some more information up and coming. There's still a meeting on it. We don't have any answers to that yet.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that perspective.
Good question.
Good question.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Another thing that we wanted to point out was the schedule at school. We always start with, like, it goes, like, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and each day, one, one of the days drops. CeCe and I, we were talking about back in two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty, that school year, when we were sophomores, we had the rotating schedule, where it rotated at the beginning of the day and the ending of the day, and it was, like, Bad Egg. That was, like, one of the days. It was, like, B, A, D, E, G. That's, like, the first one that comes to mind, and lots of students, like, preferred that, because it was, like, easier, and you didn't have to, like, wake up every day with the same class, and two classes dropped instead of one, and, like, people felt that that was, like, a little easier. We were wondering if, like, we could, like, go back to that or do something more like that. But I know CeCe and I, like, won't be here next year, but we think it would be good for all the other students.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I've just gotten similar feedback from teachers as well, like, talking about, like, having kids, like, after, like, lunch and gym every day or something, you know what I mean? Like, I saw, you guys are asking a great question.
Do you have any thoughts, Josh?
I do. Like, if someone wants to comment first, then I'll.
Yeah. Anna, thank you so much for sharing that, and even as a senior, I mean, you just said you won't be here next year, so some seniors would say, well, it's not going to matter to me, but the freshmen and the sophomores don't understand, or they weren't here living that other schedule, so that's why this is wonderful, that you're here sharing that experience, just to bring it to light to us and to your principal and those decision-makers.
Thank you.
So I'll just share some thoughts, and we, I shared a little with you guys anyway the other day. When I was principal here, we adopted the rotation, and it was a morning rotation for committee members and for people at home, because budgets were tight, and sometimes I had to have a part-time person. So I would do four periods in the morning that would rotate A, B, C, D, so that if you were a part-time person, you taught two classes, you would never, you could come in at seven, which was waking up really early, but you would leave by ten thirty. You would never have to teach a first-period class and a last-period class, and the afternoon rotated E, F, G, so that you never had the last, the students the last period of the day. We ran into a little bit of an issue, because at that point, we, remember, we had students doing internships? So I locked period G a little bit, so that sometimes you did have those last periods, but those were the seniors had to go out. I couldn't float them around. Pre-COVID, or when COVID hit, we kind of went to a six-period set schedule, and I think you guys have six now, but they, do they rotate or no? They don't rotate, right?
One just, like, drops each day.
One just drops, so you have seven classes and one drops, correct?
Yes.
So in that, that schedule that was created prior to, students signed up for seven classes, but would only have five a day, right?
Yes.
We dropped two. Seven dropped two. So you would have your morning rotation and your afternoon rotation, but there was always a day that you wouldn't have two of your teachers, and sometimes it was great for the students not to have the teachers, and sometimes it's great for the teachers not to have the students. So Dr. Jones is looking at trying to put together an ideal schedule, and if you work in a high school, there's no such animal. You can do a variation of all, but he's listening feedback from students, and especially students that were here prior to COVID, about what to have. There's drawbacks to both, because you want to elongate some periods, and in that five-drop-three, we had a sixty-eight-minute period, and then if you want to put in more courses, sometimes you have to shrink the amount of classroom time that happens. So good feedback. I think, I think the teachers are giving him some feedback also. I don't know if he's going to roll something out in September, but it's really good feedback to have, and, and I appreciate it, because that's, it's, it worked for us. It took for a while to get through it, but it did work at, at points. There are some negatives to that also. Again, if you want to do a rotation or have a a true internship program, you have to lock a period, and that doesn't mean for a true rotation. So again, good feedback, and I'm glad he's surveying kids and getting some input.
Thank you.
Do you know, just as a follow-up to that, and I don't have an answer to this, I guess I know early asked, but how does it work at the middle school level?
George, what's the middle school schedule?
Is it similar, or is it different?
It's a, or Beth.
Beth, right.
Right.
That's all right. You can do it.
The middle schools are a rotation, so you have the ability to, to change your schedule every day. So, for example, if you're on A-day, you might start with, the day starts with students in a period of related arts, and then it just rotates completely. So the difference between high school and middle school is that you have a schedule that moves in blocks at a middle school. For example, I need to move all these kids out, so a teacher can have a prep, or I need to move all these kids out, so the students can go to related arts. So once you have the matrix of filling a schedule, really, for students to be in front of adults all day, you could then have the ability to mix it up. So the schedule rotates, and what's nice about the middle school schedule is that post-COVID, pre-COVID and post-COVID, is that I'm not with the same students for my four academic majors. So in ELA, I might have different students in social studies. I might have different students in math, but then when I go to related arts, I see a whole bunch of different students. So there's, the concept is, is that you have multiple connections at different times of your life, middle school being the one where you want to make the most connections, so we separate and bring back as many times as we can.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I was just, I think it makes sense, right, feedback-wise, like, after lunch, that, whatever their class is after lunch. Yep, yep. It's probably a little bit of a, you got to get through it, so that's good feedback, but, you know, the more we can do that throughout the district, probably the better off we are, not just the high school level. And that's important, to piggyback on Don's comment, much the same way that, you know, we need your feedback from the seniors, because, you know, there's going to be other kids that are being in high school, and your feedback's invaluable. Make sure you're our representatives to do this, but one of the things that we had talked about when we formed this was you are all high school students, and we really would appreciate, you know, you going back in your thoughts or even getting feedback, whether it's other siblings or friends or whatever. Remember, you know, you can help us with feedback, whether it's middle school or elementary school or even pre-K, because we'll, we'll take it all, so thank you for that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How are you all getting information from the entire student body about what to bring us? Have you thought about how you're going to do that, right? Because there's five of you, and it's a grade that you're all from different, no freshman, right? Sophomore, junior, seniors. So how are you getting feedback from the entire student body about things that they need? Do you have any ideas, or?
So I'm fortunate enough to be elected for junior class president, so I'm having a position where I can help each of these students, and what we started to implement a month ago, we put out a Google form, so we're just looking for students to respond.
To, with a bunch of different types of questions, whether that be their mental health in the school, what they don't like about the schedule, or different things like that, which we only, we posted that on different social media sites, like, that our student, our student class owns, and that got some outreach. It wasn't as many responses we helped for, but it gave us a good idea when looking at different groups of people and how their feelings are towards the school. Most of the information that we get is just by word of mouth, either from our different clubs or from our different classes, or even from teachers themselves talking about the school. So we want to develop more of an outreach to the students that they'll feel free and comfortable to talk to, and we just need to find a better way to outreach to more people.
Great.
The Google form is, that was my, so I teach in a high school, and they, they use a QR code, so just take a picture of a QR code, and it opens up to Google form, which sounds like what you all had going on, which is great. I think that's probably, you know, you're going to hear people complaining, they're not going to want to fill out a Google form, as I'm sure you know, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Final comment or question before we move on in terms of the agenda? Yeah?
I was just going to ask one thing, tracing back kind of to, like, the schedule and stuff. I've had a lot of people ask me and just hear different thoughts and things on the, like, quarter grades, now that they're changed from just two semesters down to quarters. I've heard a lot of good things and bad things. I just wanted to know if we're going to continue that?
So that's a, that's a principal high school decision, and I know there's been different things to the committee. I think last year, I don't know, when did you switch to a hard, instead of a hard stop, to a floating stop? Was it last year or the year before? Do you remember? Was it this year? So, so you, you had a quarters in the past, when we all went to school, like, quarter one ended on October thirty-first, and if you were failing, you got an F, and then you had a fresh start November thirty, November first. Dr. Jones and the high school leadership team kind of extended that a little bit, so that if you were failing on October thirty-first, you could still pass the semester. It wasn't a hard stop, it was a progress report. We reverted back to the hard stop, correct? And there's many reasons for that, because kids, the data showed that students didn't take the opportunity to move past that F or that D or that C. They kind of got lost in the wind. So that hard stop and soft stop didn't necessarily change, so they reverted back to the hard stop, which put an end date and kind of a finality on students, so that they didn't push things off to the future. I think, I think that's going to stay. I can't tell you for sure. The pilot, that piece that the, that, that the high school did, there's not a lot of schools that do that in, in the Commonwealth, and it did affect athletics in certain respects. It did affect other things around, what's the word I was looking for? Eligibility. Thank you, Ms. Niffen. Eligibility and things like that. So they went back to the hard stop, and I think that's probably going to continue to be more traditional. So, but the feedback is good, and I hope you give Dr. Jones that feedback, because whatever feedback, pro and con, you kind of can tweak things as you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Anna?
This just, like, ties back with what Emma said with, like, the quarter grades. I know that when I was, like, a sophomore and a freshman, how we had the two semesters, and then you had, like, the progress reports, like you said, but at the ending of the semester, there were, like, midterms, and then at the ending of the year was finals, and I know that you guys took that away because of COVID, and then I think it was, like, people didn't, like, I know people were saying, like, they got rid of them, too, because people weren't, like, performing as well on them as we were hoping, but I know back, like, freshman year, because I had midterms and finals sophomore year, like, I didn't have finals at the end of the year because of COVID, but I know, but, like, in that time, it was stressful, but, like, overall, like, it kind of, like, prepares you. Like, if I had them now, if I had midterms and finals, it would prepare me for college when I have midterms and finals. And then there were no quarters. Like, when the quarters come, I get, like, overwhelmed, like, oh, my God, like, you have to do this and that, but, like, in college, if I had the two semesters with the midterms and the finals, like, I don't know, I just feel, like, the semesters was a better fit, mostly for students that want to go into college after.
Good, good feedback. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on in the agenda. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to, so.
I would just ask if you could pull your seats back a little bit, because people are going to be walking up and down to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So the next item is meeting minutes. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those, ah, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, go, discussion. We're going to have to roll call anyways, but yes.
Um, oh, gosh. Um, sorry, don't. Um, sorry, don't, just a clarifying question on the, the edit, the first edit. Sorry, I'm gonna have to find it.
Oh, this is the one you asked me about.
Right, just the, the word current year in that.
Yeah, so we had talked about making sure that we clarified in the minutes that there were kind of three or four takeaways that we had to do, and there was language about utilization of circuit breaker. And the last section talked about, we would use, we would basically use that to support the current budget, and I think Don called out the current budget in development, right? Would that be the language you wanted to add? Something like that, or the current budget for the upcoming year?
Or was it, yeah, it said current year, but I think the nature of it was for the, the coming budget, the, the future fiscal year? What am I trying to say?
Yeah, the current budget being worked on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, not this, not.
Right, not the budget we're living in right now, like as if it was right now, it would be, you know.
Can you, Don, are you, where in the minutes are you referring to, just so I can have context?
Sure.
Is it where it says points discussed? I don't know what page it is. It looks like page five on mine, but I don't know if that's.
Let me pull up meeting minutes.
Yeah, because ultimately, we just did an amendment.
It was, wait, I might even be referring to January 5th, was it? The circuit breaker? No.
Is it, so the, I'm looking at the January 12th, and on page five, points discussed, says blah, 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 preparing the budget for the upcoming year. It's talking about.
Uh, oh, you're right, but we, okay, so I'm going to hold on this because.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're only voting, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Hillary, we're voting on December 22nd, but you're right, it is a January 12th, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no problem. So any, no problem. Any additional questions or comments, concerns on December 22nd? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Fred?
Yep.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, great, unanimous. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay. We're just for sake of, we'll just go the same order. Roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Uh, sorry. Sorry, I'm thinking of the next amendment. It's Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Fred?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Great. All right, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes of January 12th, 2022 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Don?
Sure. On the email from Michelle, which came on Sunday, and it just outlined on page five, the following was added to be included, so I'll, I'll read, it says, "As committee and administration, we are all in agreement that until otherwise voted by the school committee, when preparing the budget for the upcoming year, the expected reimbursement for the present year will be utilized to offset special education expenses in that current The terminology of in that current budget. I don't disagree with the, the overall purpose and what this says, it's just to clarify in that current budget.
So maybe instead of saying in that current budget, in the development of the upcoming budget? Is that?
Yeah, I think so.
Does that work?
Could you say in the budget of the next fiscal year?
Yes, please, thank you.
Sure. Do you want to make that motion? To amend?
Me, uh, uh, me?
Yeah, because it sounded good.
I would make the motion to amend point number one to say, "Expected reimbursement for the present year will be utilized to offset special education expenses in the next fiscal year's budget."
Second on that.
Great. Any further discussion on that? Okay, this is just on the amendment. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Fred?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes. Now back to the amended minutes. Any further discussion? Great. Roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Fred?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris? Okay. Roll call votes.
Great, great.
All right.
You good?
Thank you, we are all set. Thank you, everyone.
So piggybacking a little bit on Noah, who talked a little bit about COVID and what's going on, so today at 9:30, I was on a Zoom call with the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Riley, who made the statement that at 10:30, there'll be a press conference, and he is not asking to renew the mask mandate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts after February 28th, pretty much ending the mandate as, as we go forward. Fast forward to 10:30, Governor Baker got on, Commissioner Riley got on and said the same thing. What that means for us is that after February 28th, DESI and MDPH is recommending masks only for students who are unvaccinated and staff that are unvaccinated. They've pretty much dropped the recommendation for all other folks attending pre-K to 12, pre-K to 22 schools, with the exception of buses. It's a federal mandate still, that if you're a student or a staff person on a bus, you need to wear a mask, and clinics. So in our clinics, the nurses will issue a mask to a student that comes to the clinic, and the nurses will, will stay masked in the clinics. My recommendation to the, to the, to the committee is that we've followed along with DESI policy and MDPH policy since August of, of 2020, that as of February 28th, we continue to follow the DESI and MDPH policies regarding masks in our district, along with the MIA policies as they, they modify and, and follow suit with the Commonwealth and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So that's, that's a big piece on COVID today. I don't know, I'll take some questions on that now, if we have any. Chris?
I know enforcement has always been a tough one. What do you see the enforcement on kids that are unvaccinated?
So that's just gonna be a recommendation, it's not gonna be a requirement. So, so as of January, the department, if you all remember that a school could ask for a waiver if you had an 80% vaccinated rate, and it was required, if you got that waiver, that unvaccinated students wear a mask. In the current, or the last update from the commissioner in late January, or early January, he dropped that, and it was just a recommendation. Because of the enforcement of that, because of HIPAA and different rules out there, nobody could really go ask people their vaccination status. So it became somewhat of an issue. So they've modified that, and, and really, if you, you could see this coming, it was gonna be a recommendation, not a requirement. The only requirement is gonna be on buses again, and that's coming from the Fed and in clinics, and that's coming from the state. And I actually think that's, that's decent practice for us. So we will do that. Students will be allowed to wear masks if they choose, staff will be allowed to wear masks if they choose, and he did highlight that, that students should be penalized, and if students pick on others, you should really make sure that people are understanding that students have maybe different medical needs, different social needs, their, their parents might be telling them to do different things or to wear a mask because of their beliefs or whatever it is, that they shouldn't be punished or segregated or picked on by other students. So it was just being mindful. So that was pretty big, and I think people are anxious and ready about that, and I know it's gonna be a change. My wife's school had the 80% prior to, till holidays, they came unmasked. When the spike went up, they masked up again. That mask mandate was, was, as of Monday, was taken away, and she said it went from like 50-50 to 60-40 to 70-30 as people become more comfortable. So that's, that would be my recommendation to this committee. The commissioner did say it's a local decision, and again, as we've, as a committee followed DESI recommendations all along with this, I would ask the committee to follow suit. Any other questions around masks? Yes.
What is, um, do you have the vaccination rates of?
I don't. I'm just gonna be very, I, I don't, we, when, when the nurses got slammed with the uptick in contact tracing, they stopped looking. Parents didn't submit their vaccination status, so we had to look on our, on the mask back site, which was extremely time-consuming. So I can have them start to look at that again, just to get an idea of where we're at with vaccination status.
I mean, just to, just to know if any of the schools are approaching 80%, even though that doesn't matter anymore?
So I think the only part that we may have to clarify, and I don't know if it's been clarified, is, and I don't necessarily want to turn this into a polarizing discussion, I just think for data collection purposes, is what is the definition of vaccination, right? So are we, is it first dose, is it second dose, is it?
Second dose.
So what is that?
Last, last I knew from the state, it was the second dose.
So as long as that's a clear understanding, then maybe there's a way to ask for that.
I also, I think that it might be important to get that information. I mean, I think that you could go, there was an article I was reading in the Boston Globe that has vaccination rates by town before I came here. I just think having that information out to families so that on February 28th, they can make an informed decision as to whether or not they're going to send their kid to school with a mask or not, is important, right? That's all.
Okay, so you'll report that out?
I'll, I'll try to get that out.
Or see what we have at least.
See what we can get, even by next week.
So then in terms of the committee, just so that we're all clear, we have a default position that we're gonna follow the guidance. So as Jeff just said, we're gonna follow the guidance. That's our position. Now, as a committee, we can change that. So I guess what I would ask for clarity for the committee, because we're gonna meet next Wednesday, and then we're not meeting again, it'll be scheduled until after the 28th. So in terms of the committee's pleasure, if we want to determine now to put that on the next agenda and have a conversation about changing our default position, I would open that up to anyone. Or if you don't want to make that determination now, I would say we need to know by Friday morning if you want that on the agenda, because if we don't put it on the agenda, we're not talking about it, and if we don't talk about it, we'll fall under the requirement. So, does that make sense? Yes?
So we can't vote on it tonight?
Um, we could vote on it tonight. And if you'd like.
Because you didn't make that as one of the options.
No, no, well, so, yeah, no, I appreciate you asking. So I think my point would be, if we want to vote tonight, that's fine, but I would anticipate that would mean that we're changing the default position, and, right? Because we don't need to vote to do what we already said we were gonna do.
Oh, we don't need to vote.
We've already voted that we're going to follow the guidance.
Correct.
Right? So if the guidance changes, our vote, our binding vote is where.
So we don't have to revote, is what I'm asking?
If we, if we want to revote, it would be that we're not following the guidance.
Okay. So as of right now, we're following the guidance?
That's.
And there will be, you know, it'll be up to people to whether masks are not at that point, unless we change.
Correct. And so that's why I need your help, because I don't want to not put it on the agenda next week and have one of you say, hey, I want to vote this differently. So I'm kind of giving you all that opportunity, and you don't even have to decide now, but basically, if I don't hear from anyone, I'm gonna assume we've already voted it, we're following the guidance, and that's what we're doing. So, does that make sense? Steve?
Yeah, can I just say that I think we should have it on the agenda, just because if we get any, hear anything this, next week or whatever, you know, talk of the town or whatever it might be. And also, and I just want to be clear on this, this is just the DESI guidance. We're not following, what we voted before was just to follow the DESI guidance, and that's what we would continue to do with no vote.
Right, yes, correct.
There's no other, a good MIA mention in there or something, but.
Yeah, I think the only, the only thing, and Jeff and I haven't talked about this, but we can all talk about it now, is we intended for the meeting next week to be a comprehensive follow-up budget meeting. And I could be wrong, but I, I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say that use of masks is a polarizing issue. And the last time we asked for feedback, we got 600 comments, I believe, or so.
Yeah.
So hang on one second, Fred, and I'll get to you. So I just, I, I would caution us that unless we want to vote it, or unless we maybe want to have a special meeting before the 28th, we just want to think that through, because if we, what I don't want to do is say we're gonna do a budget meeting, we have all this stuff prepared, and we don't get to the budget because of this conversation. So that's, I just want folks to think about that. Fred, yes, please.
What we had voted last time was not DESI guidance, but the Department of Public Health guidance, I believe, because of my motion. So if we don't take any vote, we're going to be following the guidance of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
That is actually true.
We'll be in complete compliance. And, you know, I do have to ask, I can't tell you the amount of emails and messages that I received today from happy parents wanting to know how soon the masks can come off, will that be effective tomorrow? It was a question that they wanted to know, they were very happy about today's announcement.
So Fred, just backing up, yeah, Fred, just as a clarifying question then, so what was the, you have the motion in front of you that we voted previously?
I, I don't have it, but I'm the one that made it, and it was to follow the guidance of the Mass Department of Public Health. And all, you know, and WPH, but it was the Mass DPH, which I think that's in conjunction with.
Can I, I think they were together.
They were together.
They were together.
They were, they were like this.
I'm gonna, they were, I believe they were together, because they didn't come out with, it should be in the minutes.
They didn't come up with separate guidance.
Yeah. Can I just ask, I don't, I agree with you, Chris, I don't think we need to make it a thing. I think that February 28th, it is what it is. My only concern is that we get information out to families so that they can make informed decisions about the choices for their families. So Jeff, whether that's announcing next week, here's the latest vaccination data by age group, whether it's sending a link out to an email to the community members when you explain, you know, that this is happening, just making sure that everybody has the information they need to make a decision for what's best for their family, that's all.
Yeah, and I don't, look, I want every school committee member to be comfortable with the decision we're making. So if we want to have a meeting on it, we can have a meeting on it. I just don't think we should have it next Wednesday if that's dedicated time to a budget. That's, that's my only request, so, yes, Chris.
I was just going to look away, if anyone's not doing it, just look back and see what we actually did vote on. I was just curious to know when that regulation, when the DESI guidance.
August 20, August 21st.
Yeah, if you go into, yeah, if you can do that, that would be great. Yeah. Or if we want, look, we can make a motion now that says we're going to follow the guidance from DPH or DESI if we want to go as abundant as a caution, and then we don't have to look it up.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Steve?
Yes.
Shell? Dawn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris? Yes.
Okay, can you just re-clarify, because you kind of just.
Yeah, so the motion is we're going to follow the guidance from DESI or DPH. Basically, so we'd be following, we'd be following the current guidance.
Definitely, yes.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris? Okay, so then you don't have to look it up. Great, okay. So we're going to move on from that one then. Again, if anyone feels otherwise, just let me know. The agenda, we try to get that finalized by Friday at noon at the latest. So if you change your mind, let me know if you want it on the agenda. And if it's on the agenda, then we might put it on the agenda to say we're going to have a date to find a meeting, just so we're all clear. Because I think February 9th, unless you feel otherwise, we need to, we need to spend some time on the budget. Okay, great. I see nodding heads, awesome. Jeff? Non-manded, non-manded busing?
You should work on that. Non-manded busing, mandated busing, I think it's something that I wanted to talk to the committee about, that we've never really addressed. And the committee doesn't have a lot to determine in non-mandated busing, but I think we needed an overview. So in the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, we are required by law to bus all K to 12 students who live two miles and out. It's the law. We have to bus them, and we all know that we get regional transportation reimbursement for that. We get actually regional transportation reimbursement for anybody 1.5 miles and out. So when I came, became superintendent, I found the loophole in that law and said we were only bussing kids out a mile, or two miles out. We can pull it back in a little bit and get more reimbursement by bussing our kids. That's the law. We also provide non-mandated busing for students who live .5 miles to 1.5 miles, and the towns actually pick up that cost. I want to be clear, we don't have a mandated bus. Bus number 18 isn't mandated, and bus number 22 is non-mandated. We put all our kids on the same bus. But the towns pick up that non-mandated cost. It's not part of the assessment, it's a separate line item at town meeting. Questions have come up in the past about non-mandated busing, and do we need it? What can we do? So we presented this pre-COVID, because I remember we were sitting in the Performing Arts Center talking about the non-mandated busing. And the question came from the town of Whitman, because they spend more money in non-mandated busing than the town of Hanson does. The cool thing, when we go, when we dig into this, you'll find that we truly have local, regional elementary schools. Like, there's a lot of kids that are a mile and a half to the school, and that's a really true local elementary. You're not, you don't have to get a bus to get on there. So that's the law. Let me just read our school committee policy. Students be entitled to transportation from the school, it's expensive public schools, when transportation conforms with applicable provisions of the law. And then we get that reimbursement for that mile and a half. So there's a law, and we actually have a school committee policy on that. We also have transportation guidelines that, we've been in district for a while. I think some of this started back when, when Dr. McEwen was here. But in our transportation guidelines for the district, we also bus all kindergarten students, whether they're mandated or not, we bus all, it's our rule that we do that. We also, in our guidelines, say that we take into account if a student is under a half-mile crossing routed routes, which is 14, 18, 58, and 27, kindergarten, where local registered sex offenders live, and areas that have no sidewalks. So we might bus students under a half-mile, under non-mandate, under non-mandated, taking these things into account, okay? That's in our transportation guidelines. So in the bus structure, oops, did I just click off or on? Did I go the wrong way? Awesome. That's what I just do. Awesome. So if you see in your handout, we bus kids by tier. And this year, we have 20 buses. We have to contract 20 buses in our current structure. And then we bus by tier. And you'll see in a future, in a future slide what those tiers are. So we have six buses at tier four, 12 buses at tier three, and two buses at tier two. The bus tiers are created with student capacity in mind, geographical area, and total drive time. So we have a system called Versatrans, which we contract with First Student, that we plug in all our data into Versatrans. It will look at their maps, the Google Maps, and then plot out the most efficient, effective ways to get our kids to school within the parameters of our school's start times, and making sure that we get kids there safely. They look at routed routes, they look at the easiest pathway, and that's what, that's what Versatrans does. They, they, they look at the addresses from our student information system. The next slide is basically what we have today. If we plugged in all of our existing students now, we'd have two buses at tier two, we'd have three, or 12, 12 three-tier buses, we'd have six four-tier buses, and kindergarten, these are half-day pickups in the afternoon and deliveries, they go at 60 bucks a pop, or $361 a day. You'll see to the right, it's 97.40, 72 a day to bus our kids, our current kids, if we're using 22, 23 standards. And you will see down below, we utilize 20 buses, 19 high school buses, nine middle school buses at Hanson, nine middle school buses at Whitman, 12 at Indian Head, eight at Conley, and seven at Duval. So you'll see, no, we don't use 20 buses at the high school, but we do have 20 buses running between Indian Head and Conley, so we have 20 on the road. I know it's frustrating for parents and for committee members and for the superintendent and the principal to see half high school buses filled in the mornings and the afternoon, but we don't have any really, we have one non-mandated student within the high school parameters because of the distance for the high school. So we have to contract those buses and, and keep them running. So I had Karen Villanueva on the next slide, slide five. I had Karen Villanueva pull, using current data and plug everything into our sandbox, which is one of the elements in Versatrans, if we pulled Whitman non-mandated busing, how that would affect us. So it does, it changes the tier system. But if you look at the right, under extended amount, it doesn't necessarily change drastically the amount per day, it just changes the tier system. So if we pulled Whitman non-mandated busing out, we'd have one route at two-tier, we'd have 18 buses at, at three, and one bus at four, for a total of 960690 a day. That's pulling all of Whitman non-mandated out of the question. You'll see down below, 19 high school buses, nine Hanson middle school buses, five Whitman middle school buses, 12 Indian Head, eight Conley, and then seven Duval. If we pull all non-mandated busing out of Whitman, this is a little bit of a change. We actually lose a bus. We cut down to 19 total. So you'll have zero tier one buses, you'll have five tier two buses, 14 tier threes, zero two, zero tier fours, for a cost of $9,011.36 a day. Down below, you'll see 19 high school buses, nine Hanson middle school, five Whitman middle school, 12 Indian Head, four Conley, and three Duval. And these are just numbers right now, I'm going to get to the, where school committee really has to understand if, if this changes how it affects us and our students. So slide number seven basically explains out what we pay, what the differentials would be with moving Whitman Middle School non-mandated and removing all non-mandated. So you're looking at a total difference in, in, in the, in the transportation budget of $24,087 by removing, removing Whitman Middle School, and all non-mandated is $131,284 in the overall transportation cost. And you'll see the differentiated down below with non-mandated. And Mr. Stamberg's actually going to go through the numbers with a little more detail than these, so you can explain, so it can be more, you can understand why the costs are going to be a little bit different. This next slide, I think is the critical slide for, for people in our community, for our school committee. So we were asked, and we ask parents every year to tell us if they don't want the bus. So you'll see, our total students at Conley is 492. 78 parents responded to us and say, don't put me on a bus. I've got, I'm driving, they're walking, whatever reason, they're not taking a bus. And you'll see that column down, 84 at Duval, 106 at Whitman Middle, 190 at the high school, 400 total students in Whitman are not taking the bus. In Hanson, it's 40, 46, 157 for 253. A total of 740, or 701 students of ours are not taking a bus right now, by the parents saying, don't put me on a seat. Everybody else, we kind of assign a seat. If we remove non-mandated busing in Whitman or at Conley.
Sorry, could you say that again?
I thought I was pretty loud, Siri. If we remove non-mandated at Conley, we're putting 328 more students in cars or walking to the school. There will only be 86 mandated students outside of that mile and a half coming to Conley, for a total of, you know, we, right now, we bus 414. So we have to look at that. We all know where Conley is and what the traffic patterns might be. Duval, we're bussing 87 students. And non-mandated, we are putting 253 students on the road or in cars or walking. Whitman Middle School, it's 173. We do bus more at Whitman Middle at 235. The high school, like I said, only has one student from Whitman. We bus 438 students from the high school. And Hanson down below, you'll see the non-mandated versus the mandated, there's less students. And Hanson has some, you know, the schools are further apart. The next slide just kind of tells you a little bit about how the budget will be affected. It's not based on just buses and ridership, it's based on the tier system. And even if we lose that many students, we still have to hire those, have those buses contracted, and we still have to adjust the tiers. So bottom line is, the more four-tier buses, the more, the more we save as we go. Now, this last slide before John gets into it a little bit with money, these are some of our concerns that we pose to the town. Again, the taxpayer has the ultimate decision at the ballot box or at town meeting. More students out and about on the roadways with parents, parents driving, we have an influx of cars and drop-off and pickup at schools. Distracted drivers are an issue right now. If I have more kids walking, we have more kids on the road, wa, potential of distracted drivers when they're trying to cross the street. We do have a number of sex offenders in both communities, level one, level two, level three. Non-supervision, I'm looking at middle school students walking without any parent, without parents and no supervision, crossing the railroad tracks in certain areas of both communities. Parents that don't have transportation right now, they can't get their kids to school. Parent, grandparents are people who are, are staying at home watching their kids, that can't get them to school. In Clement weather, we did have an issue just recently, all our sidewalks were not done by that Monday when we returned to school just this week. I'm still getting some parents that saying, my kids are on the street because the sidewalks haven't been cleared, and I can't blame DPW or anybody, they did the best they could. Crossing numbered roads or routes, 14, 18, 27, 58. One of these, our district guideline says students can't cross those roads, so we have to adjust our guidelines to make sure they can. We'd have to increase, or the towns would have to increase their crossing guards. The K siblings would be on a bus, and their other siblings wouldn't be on a bus. And their daycare providers, we sometimes bus students to their daycares based upon the needs of the families. So I have some concerns if, as a, as a superintendent about attendance and students getting to school on time if, if non-mandated goes away. And I absolutely understand the cost of that. I don't know if parents at home understand that the taxpayers of Whitman and Hanson provide a service for those students between a half-mile and a mile and a half. So I want parents to understand that this could go away, and it could go away in a year, and this is what we, as a school district, would have to face. If it's not passed in Whitman next year, or the year after, I'm putting 307 cars or 300-plus cars in the Conley driveway, and we might have to adjust where we do bus drop-off and pickup. I'm going to have to look at how many kids walk to school, and making sure that the sidewalks are cleared before we open school on a snow day. We have to make sure that our students are safe walking in groups and not by people who might be deemed as dangerous in, in our communities. So it's, it's a matter of cost, and again, it doesn't necessarily affect the school committee, but I under, I want you to be aware that if some things go away, I know parents will be coming to you and saying, well, how, how come this happened? And how come I don't have a ride anymore? So I, I, I just wanted you to be aware, we've never presented on this before, and I want John to kind of go through the numbers and what it would look like, because it would shift the assessment to the towns, because our transportation cost would remain high, even though Whitman or Hanson wouldn't be playing a line item in the budget. So John, I'm going to change, go ahead, Beth, sorry.
So I guess I'm just wondering, the purpose is, do you have an idea that mandated busing might come up as a, I mean, every year it's just glossed over. I mean, I go to every Whitman town meeting, and I have for years. And I know, I think one year we tried, we brought it up to vote on it, and I mean, it was overwhelming support that, you know, it not get dropped. Are you, you know, I'm just wondering why this came up? Is it, is it something that you're hearing?
So I've been asked, I've been asked in previous years to provide an explanation of mandated busing and non-mandated, and how we could potentially reduce. And, and I said, the difficulty is I can't just pull kids off a bus because I still have to run the route.
Yeah.
And the cost is the cost. So we did our due diligence and tried to, and I was asked by the last, the meeting I had in 2020 or 2019, to try to get parents to tell us what they want to do. Can we reduce the number of routes potentially? So we did that, and you saw the number of parents that have said, no, I don't have to take the bus. What I think a lot of parents say is, I don't want to tell you I don't want to take the bus, just in case I need the bus.
Right.
Because once we establish all our routes, it can't really change. Or we do, if a family moves in and we have to change because they're mandated, we do that. But that'll adjust everybody's, everybody's bus stop or everybody's pickup time. So we try to do this as least as possible. But I know it's probably going to be asked, and when I told Mr. Heineman I was going to be presenting this to the school committee, he said, please make sure you do the same presentation to the FinCon, because they want to have an understanding. So I don't know the talk, but I know it's been bubbling before, and I don't want the school committee to be shocked if for some reason it comes up in March and it is a real thing, and you folks are saying, oh my goodness, I'm going to have, there's going to be 370 cars going to Conley now? What are we going to do? Or Jeff, how are you going to solve that problem? Because we're going to have to do a traffic study, we're going to have to look at that. Or same thing at Duval, we all know this, that, how tight it is and how many cars are already in there. So again, this is more of a, not a preventative, but I want to get out in front of this with the committee to let them know, and I want to be transparent. This is what we've, we've done, we've tried our best to do this. And the explanation of the tiers and the routes are the, what we can do best. We could, you know, I can't hold parents' hands to say, respond to the survey, or respond to this. We do our best. We had parents, I asked them about vaccinations, they don't, they don't respond sometimes. I've asked them about test kits, I get a quarter of our community responding. So to have an accurate number on transportation, unless you associate a cost, in the town of Pembroke, where I live, they send me something, you want transportation, send me a $500 check. So if I want my kids on the bus, I have to pay for it, that means I respond. If I don't respond, there's no bus coming to my house. So we can't charge, we can't charge as a regional school district. The two communities, if they decide to move away from non-mandated, could individually charge, but we don't have a mechanism to collect, and we would have quite a bit of difficulty to add those students to our current routes based upon that. Could Whitman, and I was brainstorming, like, could Whitman take away this and, and run their own non-mandated busing and charge parents themselves, potentially? But I don't think they have a mechanism to collect those funds either. And I remember having this conversation with Frank, and he's like, yeah, just, if there's no mechanism to collect. Because this has been an issue since I became superintendent 28. It died, it died out a little with COVID, because we just wanted to get kids back.
Yeah.
But I know it has been an issue, and I just wanted to address it and, and bring to light how many kids live within that circular mile. You saw at, at Duval and Conley, only a certain amount of kids, less than 100 are taking the bus. Everybody else lives within a half a mile to a mile and a half, which again, as a community school, outstanding. But I am concerned that some of those kids aren't going to come to school, or their parents aren't going to get, you know, the bus picks them up, you get Johnny on it, and it's okay. But if they have to walk, if they have to walk in snow or rain or whatever, it is a concern. So I'm just going to change a slide so we can see what John has.
This is your slide, right, John?
Yes. Thank you, good evening. So this is, these are complex calculations on, based on three scenarios. The only way I know how to do that is to kind of take it step by step and do each calculation and try to go through it, and then see, you know, what's going on in each time we make a calculation. So on the, on the form here, the assumptions are that in scenario one is the, the non-mandated busing is as submitted in the fiscal year budget, 23 budget last, last week. Scenario two was if there was no Whitman Middle School busing. And then scenario three is if there's just no Whitman non-mandated busing at all. So with the, with step one, we'd have to, we have to determine the fiscal year 23 general fund transportation budget. So again, scenario one is what was submitted, and those are the, the components of what comes up to the amount that gets charged as a transportation assessment to each town in, in general. So this, 1843 is what was on last week. In the scenario two, it would be with no Whitman Middle School, it would be 1818. Again, I'm going to round the numbers off and try to move through them, but if you have any questions, please stop me, I'll stop, I'll stop and try to explain. Scenario three would be $1.7 million if there was no Whitman mandated busing, sorry, non-mandated busing at all. After you find that out, that number, you, step two is to determine the additional transportation costs that would get assessed to each town per the 6040 split. So this, again, that, this is the math in scenario one of how it was done last week's, in last week's budget, $390,000. Scenario two would be 451, and then scenario three would be 713. So what's going on there is, there's still transportation costs, and yes, they're not, you know, Whitman is pulled out of the non- costs, and yes, they're not, um, you know, Whitman is pulled out of the non-mandated side, but it's, but there's still transportation costs that have to be split through the sixty-forty split. So, um, that's, that's that number right there. Um, again, step three A and three B after that is we take that amount, the amount that needs to be, uh, assessed through the operational assessment for transportation, and those are the amounts, um, based on the per pupil split between Whitman and Hanson, two thirty-six and one fifty-three in the budget last week, and, uh, other, through the other two scenarios of two seventy-three, one seventy-eight for scenario two, four hundred and thirty-two thousand and two hundred and eighty thousand in scenario three. Um, after that, we have to determine, um, what the bus payments to first student are, because what we're doing now is we're trying to find the per pupil cost, the per student riding the bus cost. Let me say that again. So, um, step four is to take the, uh, amount that we paid a first student, which is the amount that, uh, this is a straight payment, and then there's a ten thousand dollar fuel surcharge allocation for a total of seventeen six-three, one point seven six-three million. In scenario one, that would go down, in scenario two, and that would go down into one point six in scenario three. Um, in step five, we take the determinant, uh, we find the per pupil bus riding costs. So, scenario one is twenty-seven, twenty-nine, that's how many bus, uh, bus riders we have. So, it's a cost of six hundred and forty-six dollars and fourteen cents per rider. In scenario two, we have less riders because Whitman Middle Schools isn't right, uh, aren't included. Um, so that's a total of six hundred and eighty forty-five, uh, per student riding the bus. Scenario three, Whitman has no mon- no non-mandated at all. There's nineteen hundred and seventy-four people riding the bus, um, for a cost of eight twenty-six seventy-seven for each student. Um, flipping over to the, if you're looking at the handouts, so, the next step is, step six A and six B, is you take that, a cost per student, and then you multiply it by how many students ride the bus for each town and, and under each scenario, and that's how you end up with the amounts that would, the additional amounts that would be charged to, um, each town through the operation assessment, not the non-mandated busing assessment, but the operation assessment. Um, so, step seven A, B, and C is a calculation of what the savings would be, uh, from the not having non-mandated, but also the additional cost of, through the operational charge of the sixty-forty split. Um, so, that's, this is the total, um, savings to the towns or additional, or additional charge to the town based on those two things. Um, so, with Whitman, it would, they would save, um, they save nothing under the first scenario, because it's as submitted. The second scenario, it'd save ninety-one thousand, and the third scenario, they'd save four, they'd save the entire amount from non-mandated. But in step seven B, they would be charged an additional amount on the sixty-forty split for the operational transportation of, again, nothing in scenario one, two hundred and seventy-three, um, thousand in scenario two, and then one ninety-five for scenario three. So, the savings, the total savings for Whitman, if they were to do those two scenarios, it would be fifty-four thousand six eighty seventy-two in scenario two, and two hundred and ninety-two thousand in scenario three. Um, again, similarly, the steps eight A, eight B, and eight C are for what it would cost to Hanson, because Hanson would see an additional cost if we were to do this. Um, and it's a similar thing with scenario one, it's all the same. Scenario two, it's, um, there would be an additional, uh, cost of six thousand four fifty on the non-mandated part, um, twenty-four thousand on the mandated part, for a total of thirty thousand five ninety-three for the, um, additional assessment to Hanson. And then in Whitman, I'm sorry, in scenario three, I apologize, there would be an increase of thirty-three thousand in the non-mandated part, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand in the mandated part, or a total of a hundred and sixty-one thousand for Hanson, um, if Whitman were to do that. And then the final part is step nine, the state reimbursements. Um, this is the, this is the, the formula that we get for state reimbursement for regional transportation. Um, it's the, uh, reimbursable transportation salaries, and you add the, the amount of money that was in, uh, budgeted from the top with step one, you subtract the non-mandated busing assessment, because the state doesn't reimburse us for non-mandated things, they're not gonna reimburse us for things that we, that people already pay for, and then a hundred and twenty-one thousand for Hanson's non-mandated assessment. So, the scenario would be one point three six million, um, under the current budget as submitted. And scenarios two and three, um, we're shifting costs to the state for reimbursement, because we're pulling out non-mandated costs. So, there's one point four in scenario two and one point six in scenario three. Um, I, I know, it's a lot of math, but that's what's going on.
So, appreciate John with the math. I just want the public too, and the school committee, this is not your vote. I want you to be aware, because if things shift at town meeting, we need to be aware, because it does change the assessment that we can control. Not really, but it's our assessment that we send to the communities. So, I really wanted John to break it down financially, those pieces of decisions that might be made, um, for a line item going forth at town meeting. It affects our students. If it goes away, it affects our students. If it's in place, it affects our students. We're in a good spot. Um, but to answer your question, Beth, like, it's not, it hasn't been brought to my attention yet, but having a little bit of forethought to share some things with you and having John do the math, um, and explain out what that actually is, is something I wanted to share, because it is budget time, and I didn't want anybody to be shocked come April if this is a conversation piece.
Okay. So, in addition to what I asked, then, Hanson has not shown any interest in stopping the non-mandated?
As of right now, no, that's correct.
Okay. So, that's why, that's why there's none of that.
There's, we didn't do any Hanson calculations as of yet. That'll be our next step, but they have not said, "Hey, look, we're looking to do this at any point."
Plus, they're, it's a little bit different on the layout.
Correct.
Town, so, and the schools.
Dawn?
So, my question would be, can we still service all these students on a bus with fewer buses? So, I asked that question, um, looking at page eight, and thank you, John Stamper for running the numbers. Um, but just to get back to the basis, all these numbers are based on twenty buses, it sounds like.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so, on page five, and we start with, the district needs twenty buses, because Indian Head requires twelve and Conley requires eight, and they run at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, twelve buses and eight buses, that's what the, the entire sort of formula and numbers are based on. If I turn to page eight, you give us the total number of kids on those buses. So, Conley's at the top, so total bust, four hundred and fourteen kids on eight buses, that's fifty-one students per bus. I don't know what the maximum ridership is on a bus. Um, and then Indian Head, we just saw twelve buses, they have four hundred and fifty-three students. That's thirty-eight kids on a bus.
So, you have to look at the demographic of when you're transferring kids from Indian Head to Mont Ponce. You have a, Whitman's five square miles, whereas Hanson's greater. So, again, you might have less kids on a bus because of the demographics of where the buses are picking up.
Okay. I, yeah, I.
Further away.
It's not that, correct, but Hanson's not that big a town. It's not Plymouth, you know, the square miles.
So, I have some.
I guess my question is, if fifty-one students can go on a bus in Conley, we could reduce, could we reduce buses? You know?
I don't think it's that, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's that simple. I just think.
Time is involved, and there is a law that states the maximum amount of time a student can ride on a bus, and that is in the regional school district transportation law. We don't want kids on a bus for an hour, by any means. But I, I would just look at those numbers and see, is it possible to still service all these students on buses, make, keep them safe, and perhaps reduce our costs? Because the cost, um, you've got it per day, right? And that's a number of nine thousand six hundred dollars. When we did this exercise, um, a year or two ago, it was nine thousand thirty-one dollars a day. So, it's gone up six hundred dollars a day. It's, you know, and, and.
Yeah.
No, the transportation companies, you know, they're aware of last year and COVID, right? They may have, they had to reimburse us and weren't as many transportation costs. Um, so, costs are definitely going up, and fuel costs are going up, and the expenses. Um, so, I would just want to still keep our students safe and service them, and is there a way to, and I know Karen's looked at the routes and so forth, so I.
The one thing, the, when you talk about reducing, but we're, we have to have at least nineteen, because I'm running nineteen at the high school. So, I mean, you can shuffle your routes, but I'm running nineteen buses at the high school. That one additional bus, if that Whitman Middle, we can look at that, but it would be down to nineteen anyway.
Why do we need nineteen? I don't know.
That's how many it takes to get our high school kids. That's, takes nineteen buses to get our, our, all of our students to the high school, based on the data that she has right now, even with the parents, with, uh, I'm gonna look at my sheet here, with.
That's twenty-three kids on a bus. I don't know. I know. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Dawn, when you say twenty-three kids on a bus, what number are you using?
Oh, so, on page eight.
Yeah.
Total bust from Whitman-Hanson High School. Oh, I apologize, I didn't realize it was broken out. So, we've got four hundred and thirty-nine and two fifty-six.
Yes.
That's the Hanson. Okay.
Yeah, four thirty-nine from.
Okay, so we need to add those two together.
So, roughly call it.
Six.
Seven hundred-ish.
Six seventy. Okay, seven hundred divided by nineteen. Okay.
So, we can continue to look at this. Again, I'm trying to bring it to the committee to, it's, it's not a, it's not a committee decision, but it's a committee.
Understand the impact.
Understanding and a responsibility if things change. Um, and I want you to be aware. And it is, makes me anxious if we do reduce in the amount of traffic that we put on the roads, or just cars and kids. Um, and the way this past storm hit, um, on the blizzard of Sunday, um, DPWs in both towns did a great job. Wasn't a hundred percent, but we managed. This last ice storm was a challenge for both DPWs and their sidewalks is still not done in some areas. So, I did have feedback, and I shifted over to both, both towns, but those would, well, those would be decisions that I would have to work with if I didn't know kids were getting a ride to school. So.
Fred?
A couple of things. One is, uh, if we increased the ridership on a bus in Hanson, that bus would take longer to do its route. So, if we were able to, you know, reduce that, we would probably run into some contractual differences as far as start times go within the schools, uh, but also have to start high school even earlier to get that jump start, so we wouldn't be stopping so late, because the same buses are used from one school to the next.
Yeah.
Now, and to answer the, the staff, but the FinCon last year in Whitman, uh, they did not recommend the, uh, non-mandated busing line item, and that's what sort of spurred this. And I believe it started the year before with some folks wanting to perhaps charge to, John, maybe you could, uh, you know, rebound on that a little bit. You have karma savings.
Yeah. I, I remember the FinCon not recommending it.
But I don't think she's, has anything to expand.
No.
Um, other questions, comments? Steve?
Um, this is not gonna be quite the thing people wanna hear, but I live down near the area of the middle school, and because of the traffic pattern at eighteen and twenty-seven has changed dramatically, the traffic in the afternoon backs up terribly in front of Cottle Ave, coming from the middle school. I don't have to say there's gonna be a tragedy there, but it is terrible. And now, if you introduce more cars, there's, the town needs to get a whole estate, and something needs to be done about that intersection. And I plan to bring this, I mentioned the one selectmen. That, it's absolutely terrible how bad it is, because people aren't moving up in line, there's only one line to get either right or to go downtown. Um, the traffic every afternoon is horrendous. I can almost see it from my street, and my street is several blocks down from Cottle Ave. It is horrendous right now. They need to do something, they change the structure. You cannot have any more than one lane going straight. Only four or five cars go through the light, they get caught up with distractions from Cumberland Farms, from coming out of the old Johnny Food Master Peapod there. Um, people will hold up lines, they will go over the yellow line to get up into the left lane because there isn't enough room, and it backs up all the way to where the crossing got us. And after she leaves, I myself almost got run over by someone. I was in the crosswalk, the light was red, and there were people still moving about because they were so distracted. It's a terrible situation. We're very fortunate, nothing's happened yet. I know I might sound a little out of line, but that really needs to be thought of. So, there is absolutely no way I'm voting to get rid of any man, non-mandated busing.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
So, yeah, one second, because I actually have a couple of quick things. So, one is a comment. According to Google, Hanson's fifteen square miles and Whitman is seven, so it's about a little more than twice the size, um, unless Google is wrong. Uh, question on slide eight, where it says no bus. Do we know what percentage of the folks that are no bus are mandated versus non-mandated?
Slide what?
On slide eight, right? So, we're looking at the total counts. There's the section that says total students, and then no bus, and then non-mandated and mandated. Do we know of those that are, I'm assuming those are three different, those are three independent categories, no bus, non-mandated, and mandated?
Yes.
Do we know the split of the no bus in terms of whether they'd be mandated or non-mandated?
These are the parents, the no bus are the people that were, no, I don't.
So, and here's why I think that's relevant.
Yes, okay.
Because I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the state law does not distinguish on optionality, it's simply a requirement.
Correct.
So, while it might be nice that we have some parents that have said, "Hey, I'm not taking the bus," I don't think the law, the law, unless I, and I just looked at it real quick, I don't think it provides an optionality to say, "If you're mandated, but you opt out." Like, I don't see that. So.
Right.
Just so we're careful, it's great the parents are doing that, and I have no problem with what we're doing, but as soon as we start to build the process where we say, "We're not gonna count those as mandated folks," they could very quickly change that opt-out to say, "Well, wait a second."
I wanna see.
You know, I'm mandating.
I wanna see, right.
So, we, we might wanna pay attention to that.
Okay.
And then, John, just to recap, so I have the numbers right. So, if Whitman, um, if we do nothing, nothing changes. If, if we take scenario two, the cost savings to Whitman would be fifty-four six eighty. Am I looking at that right? It's the step seven C? Step seven C, am I looking at it right? So, is the grand conclusion here that, I just wanna make sure I have the, the sum total right. If we, if scenario two was chosen, Whitman would save forty, fifty-four six eighty seventy-two? Am I looking at the right number?
Yes.
If scenario three was chosen, it would save two ninety-two, three forty-five?
Yes.
Okay. But at the same time, Hanson's cost would go up in scenario two to thirty thousand five ninety-three?
Yes.
And one sixty-one?
Yes.
Scenario three. So, I think it'll be really important that you have to build a scenario from Hanson.
Yeah.
Because based upon how things have gone in the past and previous conversations and discussion, I would, I would think that if this was to happen in Whitman, Hanson may look at this the same way, which is then going to chain, it's gonna cause a chain reaction, right? So, if Whitman decides to not do this, and then Hanson's costs go up and they decide not to do this, then Whitman's costs are gonna go back up because Hanson decided not to do this. So, before anyone makes a decision, it might be helpful to look at it in totality, not just, "We're gonna make this change over here and assume there isn't gonna be a equal and opposite reaction perhaps on the other town." So, it would be helpful to do that analysis for Hanson, because I think.
Yep.
You can see the cost savings switch right back.
I absolutely agree.
Okay. Yeah?
So, when we use the word "we," the word "we" is really the selectmen from either town who this ultimately lies with, correct?
Right.
I just wanna know, three twenty Harvard Street.
We a lot.
No, 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 I know, but I, I just think it's important that the "we" is not the school committee. The "we" would be what people in elected offices at the towns. Decide.
Decide. I think ultimately it's, I mean, I think it's a budget line item that goes to town meeting and the voters have to go through.
Well, correct, correct, but, but it's not a school committee decision to say whether we do this or not, correct? I just wanna be sure, so that we can get that in the record. Like, this is not.
George, clarifying. I got Dawn and.
Thank you.
It's for town.
Well, actually, no, I got Hillary. Well, actually, no, I got Hillary and then Don. You had your hand up first.
I just had a question, and it might be in what Chris was asking, John. Sorry. Why do, and if you can't answer this now because you have to break down the Hanson thing, that's okay, and I understand it. Why does the cost increase for Hanson if Whitman gets rid of this?
It's because there's still some, some, there are fixed costs that have to be covered, and it's, they're being covered by less pupil. So it has to do with the per pupil cost, the per student riding the bus cost. Because you determine what the, the cost per student is, and then you, you time, you, you know, times that out. So there's, the costs don't drop at the same rate as, you know, the amount of students dropped. So, for example, in, it's, it's 1.8 or something, and, let me get out the, get the exact number.
So Hillary, I asked the same question to this, that it doesn't make sense?
Yeah.
What would you do?
So are you saying that?
We were working it out.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask a clarifying question.
Sure.
Numbers are not really my thing. But, so are you saying that the cost per pupil, per student to ride the bus would increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's, that's in step five.
And there's a 60, 40 split with that.
Because we still have costs that have to be covered.
Yeah, okay.
So Whitman's cost per pupil would also go up, but there would be an expense savings because of the non-mandated coming out.
Okay, okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
That's awful. Okay.
Good question. Now, this is where it's nice that he gave us the spreadsheet because you just follow the stuff.
And it's just a lot for me.
All right, Don and then, all right, Don and then Mike. Don and then Mike. Go ahead. Don?
Actually, just to follow up with Mr. Farrow, I agree. It's, it's not a vote of ours or a decision, which is why my question was solely around, how can we try to simply still service students and find a way to save money overall, not just for one town or the other, but overall from the transportation top line item. That's all.
Mike, sorry.
Yeah, so a year and a half ago or two years ago, we went through this, that some people wanted to get rid of this. We researched it. Bridgewater Rainham was a disaster when they did this. I just kind of went back to my notes. $998 per student we charged, they were charging to pick kids up. That's wrong. And that, so that, if that's what we want to do, I, we're not servicing kids. Like, this is, why in the world?
It's our families.
Yeah, it's, it's terrible. And I don't even know why this keeps coming up. It's been coming up for the last four years. I don't know why. We're going through it again. But we're not helping kids by cutting this, so.
No, and I think, again, to George's clarification.
We just, we've gone through this every year for hours and hours and hours.
Right.
And I just don't understand why we, we keep doing it.
Right. So I think the only thing we can do, or Jeff can do, is if he's requested for data, he can present the data. So, Chris?
I, I understand what you're saying, Mike, and I mean, I agree with you. You guys are not servicing the students if we were to do away with it, if they were to do with it. But at the same time, I really appreciate the effort to produce such a comprehensive analysis because then it, it, I think it gives us a little bit of protection, you know, from losing this, right? I mean, it's, it's a necessary enforcement, it's a necessary process to go through. And I'm glad we did. And I'm looking forward to getting the Hanson information and then having them be able to make a informed decision. And I think, I'm confident that with all this data, it'll be plain as day that it's not a good idea to get rid of it. So I appreciate it.
So if I want to, one more thing, and the reason why I did it all, so we talk budget a lot, we don't talk about transportation a lot, and I think a lot of parents who either attend or don't attend town meeting wouldn't realize that if it was voted down, it would affect them.
Right.
And that, that was my concern. When I started looking at the numbers and looking at the radiuses of how many kids it would affect, saying, hey, if this does go away, or whatever, these folks didn't have their voice heard or didn't know that could go away. So I just wanted to be more informational than not.
Yeah, I mean, I think, come on up, and then, Don, I think the problem, so in my head, the issue is at the state level, right? The state should come up with a better way, right? So they create the mandate, this is what you have to do. It's a blanket statement. You know, maybe, you know, through, if they couldn't be creative, maybe there's a way to provide a, hey, we're going to give you a, we're going to give you an X dollar tax credit if you don't use the bus.
Right.
And opt out, because it would probably be a lot cheaper for the state to do that than have actually the reimbursement and costs that go with it. So ultimately, I, I agree with you. There's got to be a better way to do this. Because I think we all see the buses and there's going on. But at the same time, the state doesn't take that into account with the requirement. So it's, it's annoying. But yes.
Okay, so it's Kathleen O'Tina, Whitman Finance Committee, liaison to the schools. Once again, I will need to thank John for the exhaustive work he's done putting the details into this report. The take-home message for me really is, if the middle school is eliminated, the town of Whitman saves $54,000. And if all of the non-mandated, mandated busing is eliminated, we would save $292,000. So when we saw the initial presentation, we being the FinCom, of $485,000, last year it was 411, and the previous year it was 361. It's like, is there no end in sight to the increases that we're going to experience for busing? And the big difference between Whitman and Hanson, obviously, is that our kids live within walking distance of the schools, to the extent of about 80% of the students, whereas Hanson's, about 20% of the students live within walking distance. So most Hanson children are covered by mandated busing. So I'll be able to take back to the finance committee next Tuesday, the message that eliminating non-mandated, mandated busing, or recommending to our Board of Selectmen, because it's their policy, that eliminating non-mandated busing would save the town. It's going to save the town $292,000 max. But as a former school committee member in Milton, I can tell you, I was on for nine years, the only thing that parents ever called me about was when their kid's bus got changed. Not that they didn't have textbooks, not that there were 30 kids in the classroom, because it was the early years of Prop 2 and 1/2. It was that their kid's bus group got moved and they couldn't stand at their front door and see them anymore. So I know that the trouble of eliminating busing causes, when parents all of a sudden wake up and say, what do you mean? I have to get my child to school, and I have two babies up in the, in a crib, and it's raining out. So I know that it's not just, we'll save a lot of money if we go against the, if we recommend and the selectmen decide to eliminate this policy. So again, John, thank you for the work that you've done to put these numbers together, give some credibility to the budget that, in the past, it was just a big fat number.
Thank you. Chris?
I'd like to say quickly, to Chris's point earlier, if Whitman went ahead and did this, there may be a chain reaction. There may be more expense delivered.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I heard that part, too.
I have my calculator right next to me.
Not that, not that past history would ever suggest that, a chain reaction of things. But that's okay. All right. Are we good moving on?
Yes.
So, John, if you want to come up, the, the next item is, we're trying to get folks in our food services to a, a living wage, the minimum wage in state. And we found through time, Nadine has brought up the, the situation that we have, people that aren't making minimal wage in the, in the Commonwealth. So John has a, a handout for you to look at, and we need school committee approval to make these wage changes.
Did they get the handout?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do. Oh, okay. Fantastic. Of course they got the handout. So, right now, with the handout here, this is for the food services. I call it school lunch because I'm still in the town thing, but it's a food service. Right now, for general workers, step one is $12.16, and step two goes to 1286, step three, 1312, 1374 is step four, 1426 is step five, and 1530 is step six. And anyone that has, is a substitute gets 1216 an hour. Right now, the, the minimum wage went up to 1425 as of January 1st, 2022. We're, we're not subject to the, to the minimum wage, so we don't have to charge 1425. We don't have to, to give that wage. But, I mean, these amounts, in my view, are low, and at least we could bring them up to what the mass minimum wage is, or $14.25. So that would be a $2.09 increase to anyone that was a general worker or a substitute. And I, I put the, the, the costs down below, and it would be, if we did it for an entire year, it'd be $37,000. If we retroed it back to January 1st, we made it retroactive back to January 1, was when the state went to the, to the $14.25 per hour, it would cost $25,518. Right now, I, I left it over there, but I believe that these, the, the school lunch fund has 186 something in it, but, again, it's over there. But there is enough money in the budget to cover, in the school lunch to cover this increase. School lunch is entirely funded by itself. It's, there's no, no assessment or anything to do with it. It's just its own special revenue fund. So, and I, and Nadine Dusset, our, our, our food service person, not a school lunch person, our food service person is here if you have any in-depth questions.
Does anyone have any questions for John or Nadine? I mean, it's something, we brought this up a little last year, but we're struggling with getting employees, because an employee can make more money anywhere else than here right now. So I think it's fair to our employees. They work hard. It's a revolving budget. It's self-funded. We don't spend anything out of the district budget because Nadine runs a good program. So she's made that recommendation to John. John brought it to us. I want to bring it to the committee. We wanted to kind of do it before the holidays. Things got messed up a little bit. So we're bringing it to you, and we're looking for some assistance from you to, or some thoughts on this proposal.
Yeah?
I would move to accept the proposed change by Nadine Dusset.
Second.
So can you just clarify the motion, though? Are you with the retro?
That is what, can I clarify that in discussion? Oh, with, with retro, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, with retro.
So the bottom line, because he, there's kind of a couple of options, so I just wanted to make sure your motion was clear on what you were motioning. All right. So Don made the motion as presented with the retroactive increase.
Stephen seconded.
Stephen seconded. Discussion. Don?
So the clarification is, the $37,000 is the, is that the total increase from the retro January 1st for FY '22?
So $37,000 is what would it have cost for an entire year? And $25,000 is what it will cost this year because we're, if you were to retro it back to January 1st.
Oh, okay. Okay. So essentially, $37,000 would be a retroactive back to July 1st.
If it was.
If it was an entire year, but that's, that's the cost for the entire year.
Okay, okay.
Are we, are we planning on doing a retro? I'm not against it, but are we?
So I think the way the motion was presented is that it would be retroactive to January 1st.
At the 1425 per hour.
Correct. Which would be a cost of 25, 518, 90, correct?
Yes.
We can change the motion, but that's the motion. Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Fred?
I believe that we have no choice. Not only is this probably the right thing to do, but it's also to be legally compliant. We have to do it.
Are we subject to minimum wage?
No, because we're an education, we're a school system. We're not. So the right thing to do, Fred, I don't disagree, but I think the, the fact is, we don't have to by law. And that's where it's got us into trouble by keeping the numbers lower than they have been in a while.
Yep. Chris?
Need amendment to the?
No, I think the mo, I think, no, I think everyone's good, right? It's, so it's retro to January 1, but going forward, we all know what that cost would be if we were doing it for a full year.
Can I, can I add one more suggestion? I would, in the future, I would like to see us review these rates annually. I think that might be a wise idea.
Well, does, can I, does minimum wage go up every year? Or this year, January 1 was the, the retro to January 1 was because these were the minimum wage changes as of January 1 this year, correct?
The minimum wage has been going up every year in Massachusetts. I think it goes up one more time from 1425 to $15 next January.
Okay. So then maybe we need to put that down somewhere to look at it.
Mm-hmm. I put it, I put it in my notes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Everyone's clear on the motion. Great. All right, we'll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Shell?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris? Great, unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
So, thank you. Next is briefly school choice. February, we had earmarked as, as an public hearing on school choice. The policy subcommittee brought up school choice at our last meeting. So I just wanted to fill the committee, and we will talk about school choice. And I wanted to give the policy subcommittee some time to review our school choice policy and how many students we have. So it's, I didn't want to say we were avoiding school choice in February, but the policy subcommittee picked this up, and I want to provide the school committee as much information about school choice when you move to vote for or against school choice in either the March 9th meeting or the March 16th meeting, depending on where we're at.
So we'll do it in March?
We'll do it in March.
Okay. Then we'll have additional information.
We should, right, Chris? We should have, based upon where we're at.
Okay.
Letter E, and I apologize for the administrator's contract delay in getting it to. The policy subcommittee met last Wednesday and approved this draft copy of the new policy for administrator's contract. I sent it to council on Thursday, and Andy sent it back to me this morning. So you have a draft of the proposed new policy for administrator's contract. It doesn't have to be voted on tonight. There can be some discussion tonight. It's a, it's a first draft. And the policy subcommittee is meeting again prior to our next meeting. So if you have suggestions on this, or if you want to email me those suggestions, again, this is a review. It's a first read of that policy. You, I have attached Mass General laws according to contracts and what's in our policy manual or contracts as well.
Anyone have any comments or feedback on the policy now? I got two quick things, Jeff.
Yep.
So the third paragraph says, the superintendent reserves the right to revisit the financial contractual parameters based on unique qualifications of the candidate. So if I'm reading the sequence properly and understanding, the way it would work is, for those that are in scope.
Mm-hmm.
You would bring parameters to the school committee. We would agree to the parameters. But you reserve that final right to go outside those parameters if you need to or not.
So, no, the scope would be, I'm going to hire a principal for Indian Head next year. You tell, we, we meet an executive session.
We say it's going to be between X and Y.
This is the parameter. Right. The next step is I interview the candidate.
Yep.
And the candidate has a double doctor.
Yep.
And it doesn't fit the scope of those parameters, I come back to the committee before I offer that position.
Okay. So then can we change the language? Because I think the way I was reading it, because it says the superintendent reserves the right to revisit the financial contractual parameters, can we just say based, can we add something that says, any changes outside the parameters will be brought to the, back to the school committee?
Is that?
Something like that.
You guys, I mean, yeah, I.
Or at least consider that, because that aligns exactly with what you just said, right?
Is that the gist of what we talked about?
Yeah, that is, exactly. You agree, right?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah. Because, I mean, right, if we say it's between X and Y, I just, it kind of defeats the purpose if you decide to do Y times two.
Right.
And we don't know about it, right? So, okay. And then, just to clarify, the next section that talks about, basically, if there's a second contract for someone, it would be renewed by the superintendent following the process of the initial contract. Are we talking about basically the, the process above?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe just look at that wording, too, because I just, I don't know if there's a way to tighten rather than saying the process of the initial contract as described above? Like, something like that would make it super clear to me.
Yep.
Those are the only two quick things.
That's the feedback.
So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Fred?
The third paragraph, and I agree with what you want to add, but perhaps the word prior to offering?
Uh.
Is there a right to revisit the financial contractual parameters and consultation, you know, consult with the school committee prior to?
Fred, what? Uh, prior to, and prior to executing the contract or something like that, Fred?
Executing contract or prior to, you know, negotiating outside of the parameters.
Yep, yep. I think we're on the, I think that's similar feedback, right? We just need to make sure that Jeff has the latitude to collect feedback and work it. But if we set parameters and he goes outside the parameters, it should come back to the school committee. As long as we say that bottom line, I think we're good. Prior to, prior to execution, Fred. Good point. Okay, great. Moving on.
Just PTO meetings. I've got a list of, of PTO meetings. Chris and Chris and Jeff the Roadshow is going to try to get out in the next month to meet with PTOs. Had a great meeting at Indian Head today, one of my superintendent's coffees, about 12 parents, which was, which was the most I've had. And maybe because I plunged, they felt bad, so they wanted to come and have coffee with me. But we'll be out and about, and I'll give Chris and Chris the list. Partially is one, to, to hear from our community. Two is also to explain how our budget process works in the next month. So the PTOs, you will see us, Duval, Whitman Middle, and Conley, coming soon.
Good.
John, you want to go to your financials, please?
Thank you. So it's the usual monthly report. First document looks like this. It's the 19-page document for the general fund. These are the amounts through January. That happens all the time. So the, for revenues on page one, we've received 30 million, three, again, I'm going to round the numbers, 30.3 million on a $56.7 million budget. And that's, you know, that's a break. And that's, you know, that's a breakdown of where we have on, on the revenues. And then every, every, all the assessments, I'm sorry, all the expenditures on the pages 2 through 19, with a total at the, at the end of, we've used $30,640,000 so far on a 56, 797, 579, 40 budget. So, that's, that's just the usual document there. And the second document that I've been giving you every month for a while now is the deficits as of January 31st. There are 21 of them right now with a total of $560,618. Numbered, I, I've put this on the, a little bit on the back burner because I've had other things that I've been working on. But, I've, I, I'm hoping by the next meeting, I'll have all of these lined up and we'll be able to go through each one of them and, and find a source and, and get rid of them. Number 2 is highlighted, a district-wide teacher learning professional development salary for $67,000. That's been corrected, so that's why it's highlighted. It's just, it was, I corrected it in February, so it doesn't show up in the January report. So, I did it last week. So, that was the one I think we had talked about at the last meeting, I believe it was the last meeting, maybe it was the meeting before. It was a, a tech person that had been misclassified, and I've corrected that since then. So, it's really a 560,000 minus 67, or about 500,000, 490,000. And then, the other documents are the ones that I'm going to go through in, in detail in every quarter. But, I just wanted to send them out to you each month, just so you can look at them. It's the balance, one of them is the balance sheet comparison and the revenue and expenditure comparison. And then the fund balance activity. And just a highlight on that page, just even though we're not supposed to be going through it until the quarters. I did add the, at the top, we're, under a balance sheet comparison, where it says reserved for expenditures. I have added in January's amount, the amount that we would, at the end of the year, what would be there as a reserve for fund balance. So, 896,961 is, would be a reserve for expenditure. 10,685,88 would be reserve for band and bond premium. So, the, if you looked at the unreserved, which is the E and D, right now, if the, if the fiscal year ended in, on January 31st, which it doesn't, but if it did, there would be $1.2 million in, in E and D. Again, you have to remember that last year for reserve for encumbrances was something like 500,000. I can't remember the amount, I think it was 550 something. So, it would be, that would come out of that 1.2. So, that's kind of how to read this when you're, when you're looking at it is now we're getting closer to the end of the year. We can put real numbers in for reserves and you can keep an eye on that E and D line and see what, and maybe in the, in the next month, I'll, I'll put in a, whatever the encumbrance was for last year, I'll put that number in so you can get a truer picture of what E and D would be. So, that's, that's just on that. The other, other documents are a breakdown of all the, of the expenses, expenditures in the general fund. And then all the, the listings of all the grants through January. Again, these, these things change because, you know, I find things, or things get misclassified and I correct it. But, this is just a snapshot through January. Any questions?
Questions from anyone? Okay, great.
Okay.
We'll spend some quality time next week.
And I did look at the school lunch, I think I said 186, and it's, if you look at the documents in there, it's 168, so I didn't transposition. Apologize, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business passover, number 11.
Do you want to pass over 11? Okay.
So, we're passing over the high school program of studies, it'll be presented at a later date.
And field trips, I closed out of the folder, so, I know one was to Connecticut.
One's canceled. There it's canceled.
Which one's canceled?
That's the one.
Okay, so DECA is the only one.
Can I just go back to the program of studies? I don't know if the students were waiting, will that be like the next March meeting maybe? Obviously not next week.
It'll probably be at the March meeting, yes.
March meeting, okay.
And I told the students it was going to be passed over tonight.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so, in your packets, there's a field trip request for DECA to do the state conference in Copley Plaza, Boston. So, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented?
Second.
No, on your motion. There you go. David got the, David got the motion.
I was ahead of him.
You're really going fast.
I am, sorry.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Steve?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris, yes.
Mike? Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Great, approved.
Awesome. You want to talk more?
Warrant, what do you want to propose? So, yeah, so generally speaking, I think, so this came up at the end of the last meeting where we've had some challenges in getting the signatures on the warrant because people were out in a way and needed to be out. So, the question was, hey, can anyone sign it? And then, we had a conversation about, I think previously as a committee, we had simply voted the four people to sign. So, I think what we'd be looking for is a, a motion from the school committee that would say, you know, in the absence of the four signers, any school committee member is authorized to sign a warrant. So, could I get that motion?
On mode.
Thank you, Fred. Second, any discussion? You all get it?
In fact, I'll just elaborate for anybody who doesn't know, we just had trouble that it had been a whole week after a warrant that because of illnesses, the two guys couldn't sign. So, just Don and I had signed, so it was a problem that, you know, it hadn't been signed for a whole week. So, that's what we were looking for, was just somebody else could come in and sign.
Yeah, and rather than make it one person, and again, it's through no fault of anyone, people are sick, they have to stay away, it's no big deal. So, this, this will solve it for us going forward.
Yeah.
And to be clear, we do have an excellent warrant, warrant signing subcommittee.
Yes, we do.
And so, it, it's very helpful, like, when we get the, whether it's payroll or whatever other expenses, that it happens on a Wednesday, and Michelle's been terrific in letting us know. So, the whole, the whole process is there, it's going well.
Yeah.
It's just some, some.
Just a clink once in a while.
Mr. Voice, you can't get sick again.
I know.
This just gives us a good.
You and David cannot be out at the same time.
Right, no more hanging out at Papa Gino.
Gives us a good backup plan, so, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Steve?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris, yes, Fred?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris?
So, number 14, so Director of Facilities, Ernie Sandlin, is retiring in, in August. As you might know or might not know, when, when I and George took over up in central office, we combined facilities and technology into one department calling operations. Now that Ernie's retired and the, we don't have a Director of Technology, we're looking to bring in somebody as a Director of Operations with a strong facilities background. So, in your packet, you have a job description to review, and again, send me edits moving forward. This is a person we're looking to be a supervisor, somebody that the committee can, they will be a true Director of Operations. So, when we give a presentation here, you don't have tech, you don't have facilities, you have somebody who knows both departments pretty solidly. Ernie's going to be difficult to replace, he has a lot of institutional knowledge. But, this is what we've put together as a, as a person that we hope can fit the build. If it doesn't work out, we'll go back to the drawing board and potentially go back to a Director and a Director. But, we're hoping to get a, a true Director of Operations to join our team. The goal for us would be before, before June, so that he could experience or she could experience the summer, because the summer is extremely challenging with closing buildings, opening buildings, summer work, things like that. So, please look at that, that job description, provide feedback, and I'd like, I'd look for a vote sometime in March.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Fred, go ahead.
As a little bit of feedback, I would like to see under the qualifications, something in relation to knowledge of state building codes?
Okay.
Construction. You know, knowing a lot of the little projects that we do in-house?
Yes.
And, you know, watching over folks, I think that that would be very important.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing that you're saying this publicly, I'd also like to add, Ernie's going to be a very tough individual to replace. I swear, when the high school was built, he stuck his finger in the cement, tasted it and told him that it had enough water. You know, he, he's been a fantastic, fantastic person for an awful long time. And I hope he also passes on the knowledge that wires, while they may be color-coded, they may have brown tape, black tape, yellow tape, because things didn't work right and he had it fixed. So, hopefully he does that, but I do want to thank him from the bottom of my heart.
Yes, thanks Fred, we'll share that with him too. That's why we kind of want to bring somebody in to kind of learn, learn from Ernie for a couple of months and shadow him going forward.
Okay.
Chair?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Comment, so, do we have a Director of Technology? Or can you share a little, because this sounds like an expanded role, whereas right now Ernie, Ernie is just facilities-focused?
We, we removed, we lost the Director of Technology position in 1920, so we have not had a Director.
Oh, sorry, I got to understand.
The 2019, 2020 year.
Never mind, it was a fiscal year.
Fiscal year, so, no, so this is an expanded role. We will still look at having an Assistant Director of Technology. And then, kind of look at having an Assistant Director of Facilities as well, where this person supersedes and oversees everything. One of the pieces of this, of Ernie's position was he was the on-call only person 24/7. We're looking to expand those in both those areas in tech, we don't want just one person being here 24/7, 365. So, looking at this as, it is a, a facilities-based piece, but really a, a position that runs the both departments.
Okay, so it, yeah, I, I'm just thinking back to how we talked about the budget and retirements, right? So, this is a retirement, similar if we have a, a teacher retiring and, you know, can we recognize savings or how we use that? So, essentially, there may not be any savings necessarily with this position?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the few, looking at my teachers, after 30 years of service, you're at a top step in top lane. Ernie's up there, but I'm pretty sure right now the going rate for somebody in operations or even in facilities, you're looking at the 120 to 130 mark, no matter what.
With a technology background.
With a technology background, so.
Yeah, I'd be curious if you find someone, facilities-focused and technology, that, to me, that seems like two different avenues. But, if that person's out there, I don't, I don't know. I, I guess I would also just like to look holistically at our school department. I know George actually mentioned he's the grant writer, but we, you know, in central office, we have a lot of needs too, right? You know, Director of HR, we don't have, Director of Performing Arts, we don't have Director, Manager, Grant Writer and so forth. So, I'm just thinking, you know, this Director of Operations position is one we're really creating in a way. It's moving from a facilities manager to this. So, my last comment will be in regards to our strategic plan. I did notice that one on number 4, that is our established safe and secure learning environment, safe and secure operations in school. So, it, it talks about a flow chart, so create 4.5, create an operations flow chart with updated job descriptions to reflect industry changes and staffing levels. So, maybe in the future, we can look at the flow chart and how these positions and get a better understanding of maybe where our needs are in relation to, you know, positions we're creating. Just to fall in line with what we have on the strategic plan.
Okay.
Yeah, and it goes along right with it, this position, if it can be done, would be, has a flow chart attached to it. So, how does operations then affect both facilities and technology? The, 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 the lack of structure we have in the sense of the operations department is that there is no point person for the intricacies that take place. You remember four years ago, in a budgetary move, we removed the Director of Technology because we needed more boots on the ground, as it were, to do different things. So, this person would be the spokesperson, this person would be handling the managerial, the budgetarial, all of those different aspects of the whole operations department. And then, we'd really be looking to make sure we have an Associate Director or an Assistant Director in each to be the people who have not only the, the skill of that area, but then have the ability to make sure that the jobs within those areas are done. We'd also then have the one office person, office manager, admin assistant, whatever, who handles the munis aspects or the budgetary aspects back to the whole. So, we're, we're trying to say, where are deficits, but how do we then make a team that can service more than one area? But, we do have other deficits in other places, so, it's, I'm not sure if we can pull it off, but I do know that technology and facilities are intricately linked the longer and the more developed we get, whether it's the medicine system that we talk about, whether it's even something like a school building event where technology plays a role because you need media and you still need physical labor of setting up tables. So, that's what we're shooting for, if it works, great. The budgetary impact will not be a savings, but it will not necessarily be an addition either if we look within our departments and then we look to sort of restructure the Ernie position if we can.
So, when Jeff put this, just real quick, when Jeff put this on the agenda, we, I asked the question, very similar to kind of the conversations we're having now. So, the one thing I just want to make sure we're all clear on is, you know, I appreciate your efforts to find that person that has those skill sets. But, if you don't, then I think that's okay, like, this, you know, try it.
We're looking, right.
And then, you know, you may have to have a conversation, because I think we all recognize that when you're talking about someone that has some of the specialized knowledge on like the facility side and on the techno, you may not find that person that has both, so. Good idea to try it, absolutely, rather than hiring two positions and now who are they managing to? And just adding a lot of headcount, I, I fully support where it's going, but don't put yourself in a box where you feel like, well.
We have to stick to this.
Yeah, we said we were going to do this, at that point, just have the conversation.
This is the first step of a job description.
And a background, maybe experienced MSBA, right, school building project.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot there, okay. Who do you want to go next?
Draft to the calendar, so, in your packet, you have a draft, first draft of the calendar. So, we're looking at, where am I, I'm looking here. August 31st is our first day of school, teachers reporting in on the 29th. We are still in contract negotiations with Unit A and, and change in the start date and days might affect this. But, right now, in your first draft, you're looking at August 31st for a start date for students with a, with an end date for students on June 13th. And a five snow days being June 21st. On your calendar, you see a yellow 16, that's a, that's a typo there. But, five days would be June 21st with snow. June 19th is a state holiday now, so, we added that. Now, Chris and I received a letter, Chris received a letter from the town of Hanson today, if you want to read that.
I'm not, so I won't read it, but the gist of it was, it was a letter from the Town Clerk of Hanson requesting that we consider closing the schools for the state primary election on Tuesday, September 6th, and the state election on Tuesday, November 8th, so.
We have the, we have the 8th already on the calendar. So, that's just to take into account for consideration, that would bump us up another date, potentially. Make a nice long weekend, but.
And this is only an issue in Hanson.
Only an issue in Hanson.
Where do they vote in Whitman?
Town Hall.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Fred?
I think traditionally, we've done the same, you know, for Whitman as well.
No, 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 sorry, absolutely, yeah, Fred, let me clarify the question. I'm not, I'm not advocating we only close the schools in Hanson. I was asking that the voting is only taking place in a Hanson school in Whitman, I wasn't sure where they voted, so.
If I'm not mistaken, and I know that, I won't say anything because I know we're in negotiations.
Yep, thanks Fred.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that, thanks Fred.
So, are we, and you're thinking then on the next draft, we'll honor that?
I mean, again, think through that, we got that letter, I think, Michelle, we got the letter today. So, we didn't add it to the, to the, to a reading item, but they're requesting that, that day off for the primary, so, and that would affect the calendar.
Yeah.
Well, Lee, I don't like pushing out another day, but, you know, the town, it is a town-owned building and they do support us, so.
I know, but can I also say from an educator's point of view, it is very nerve-wracking to have people in the building in and out all day long. Like, it's just, it's a, it's a security issue for sure, right?
Parking lot traffic.
And that's the other thing too, like parking lot.
Find somewhere else to vote.
Okay, excellent.
Right, that would be great.
John, do you want to just talk about phones, the surplus, please, finish up?
Thank you, so, we are putting out a request for proposals to replace the phone system and throughout the school district. Right now, we've put the, the proposal out with the idea that the vendor, whoever, whoever wins it, the successful bidder, will take all the old phones and all the hardware, give it to us and we'll store it. What I'd like to at least, you know, come before the school committee now and talk about is we could add an addendum that we could have where the, the vendor takes all that stuff and, and just, you know. where the vendor takes all that stuff and just, you know, gets rid of it in any way that they could. So it would be, it would require you to vote the phones and the gear and the 20-year-old stuff and the old stuff that they're going to be pulling out when they put the new phones in. That would be a vote to declare that surplus. So then we would be able to give it to a vendor and have them get rid of it. Right now, the way it's written, they're going to give it to us. We're going to go store it somewhere until we decide what we can or can't do.
No, get rid of it.
So is this more just kind of giving us a heads up? And if you get to that point, you know, and you feel like it doesn't make sense to store it, there's no resale value, et cetera, you want to, at that point, declare it a surplus? You just come to us then with a specific listing of what it is?
Most of the stuff is going to be old and unusable, but does it have any value?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I just don't know. Are you asking for us to vote it now? Or are you asking us to vote it with a specific listing?
I wanted to bring it forward, and if you wanted to vote it as, to get rid of it. Because right now, the default, we had to come out with the, with the request for proposal. Right now, the default is the vendor gives it all to us and we store it in.
So if I understand it correctly, it's like, we don't want to miss an opportunity to get rid of it for nothing. We don't want to store it.
That's exactly it, yes.
Okay. So do you want to, do you want to do?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we give them the authority to get rid of all the phones. When they, the old, the old equipment.
The successful bidder will be able to dispose, to take possession of all the phone equipment and dispose it appropriately.
Sounds wonderful, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Fred.
Wouldn't we need a more detailed list as to what we're declaring surplus?
That's what I did, that's, that's what I don't know either.
I don't feel comfortable, I don't feel comfortable with just saying the old phones.
Yeah, I mean, it's up, it's up to the committee. I think we can certainly delegate that to management if we so choose our administration, but we can also choose not to, so. Chris?
Yeah, I think something like this is absolutely within the jurisdiction. You know, okay, we have the ultimate authority, but I have no problem whatsoever letting a company we hire come in, determine what is no longer able to be used with our new system, and disposing it. That's pretty straightforward, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Any other feedback? Okay. Fred, anything else, or are we going to move to the vote?
Yeah, I mean, the committee's going to do what the committee's going to do, and I'm going to, you know, do what I need to do, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I understand. I think the reality is, you know, if they give us a list, unless we show up and sit next to them and make sure it's on the list, we're still, there's still an element of trust there, so it's, it is, it is what it is, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Everyone has their own possible.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. All right. Do you have a comment or are you ready to vote?
I want me to vote.
Steve's ready to vote. Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Fred?
Abstained.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Chris? Okay. You got that, Michelle? Thank you, thank you, everyone. Whitman Middle School building.
So Fred, do you want to talk about Whitman Middle School? Or do you want me to?
Uh, I need to hear because I'm getting some feedback.
Okay. Chris or Beth, you want to add anything from the middle school project?
Well, we're meeting again next week. We made a calendar appointment of every two weeks, just in case we need it, so that things can move along on a good state. So that every two weeks, we have a scheduled meeting, starting next week. We will be meeting with the company next week, and we will start on choosing a group to work with. Jeff is, would be on it. And I think, let me see, it was the chair, I mean, it was the business administrator from Whitman and one school committee member and...
Town representative, superintendent, and/or designate, and a school committee member to choose. The OPM is in the process of looking at our project designer. Is that, is that what it's called, Fred?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'll report, so what we do is we approve the request for proposal.
I know it was.
To be published, well, to be sent to MSBA for their approval. They come back to us, we're in the process, it's very similar to the OPM, where they have their boilerplate. And we'll be meeting next week just to iron that out completely so that we can place the ad at the central register and get going on a designer. Now, the Designer Selection Committee is what that's called. It's for the Designer Selection, Jeff, you just said it. The superintendent, the business manager from Whitman, a town representative, and a school committee member.
No.
We will vote that committee formally at our next meeting. And then we're off to the races.
So, so just to clarify, Fred, it's a superintendent, and/or designate, a town official, which could be the town administrator or selectman, and one school committee member. That's allowed by MSBA, just three folks from our committee.
Was it three or four?
It's three.
I don't have it in front of me, okay.
Thanks, Fred.
Yep.
Facilities, anything?
Facilities, we're meeting next week. We couldn't meet today.
Policy? Anything further?
Yep, so we met last week. We had five items on the agenda, one of which we discussed tonight. It's a draft, administrator's contract. We followed up on the student dress code that Chris had brought to our attention previously. And we're going to be looking at the district's policy related to district's administrator's coaching and athletic director's coaching. Again, this is done with our initial idea with looking into things that affect students, you know, how do you want to say it? Like, have a major impact on students. I don't know how we worded it. Hillary, do you remember? How we said to do that?
Just our, our goals for the year?
Yeah.
Just like, like impacting the students' experiences positively, right? So we talked a lot about the dress code. I'm just going to jump in for a minute. We made sure, I know that there were concerns about it matching up in the handbook and our policies, so we made sure that's all set. And then Dr. Jones was actually at our meeting, and he talked about how he is working with the school council and students to talk about the dress code policy, because we spent a lot of time looking at it and how it targets certain demographics of students and doesn't target others. And so we kind of are going to go off of his lead. That's kind of how we left it, where he's going to talk to school council. And I thought it might be something that we could talk about with the Student Advisory Committee at some point. Just their thoughts on school dress code and things like that. It was good conversation, the dress code piece was good, so.
Good. Good. Negotiations, I'll take that one. So we've met several times, and we have a couple more meetings coming up. I think the plan is we will do an executive session in March to give you an update, an executive session. ECE advisory, anything?
David, do you want to speak yesterday?
Yeah. So the Advisory Committee met briefly yesterday. We viewed our Universal Full Day K presentation that we're going to present to the full committee. We ran over any adjustments that needed to be made and added some clarification. Along with that, Dr. Foley and the superintendent are meeting with Mr. Casey tomorrow at the Vols School to work on a video presentation. After that's done, we're going to touch base and talk about other avenues of communicating and getting that outreach out there and looking at that presentation and going from there. And then also discussing when we're going to show the Universal Full Day K presentation to the entire committee. And, yeah, that's where we're at.
Can I ask a question? Just because I feel like this date always sneaks up. So usually, applications, I know that because Full Day K is on the docket, but in my last four years' experience, usually the kindergarten applications go out relatively soon, and is that still a thing? I just don't want people to miss it if...
It's as is, the stuff is going out. What date is, what is it, George?
We all be posting about the 15th.
Do, in March sometime, usually?
Yeah, I want to say, and I think it's, if you post it on 15th, by March 9th is when that starts to go from there.
Don't quote me on all of this, but I know that on the 15th, everything will be ready to be loaded on the website with all the further instructions, dates, and times. The embedded links, the information session, all of the things for what everybody needs to do. It'll stay status quo, as it always has in the past. However, there'll be a caveat with what we're presenting in the budget, and then the superintendent will have a FAQ to answer questions. But the reason why is it's always been right before, last, last three years was the, this week, but now it's going to be for next week. And the reason being is that we wanted to make sure we presented the budget, gave some time for people to breathe, breathe that in, and then go from there. And then we'll be able to accept applications for people on the week of February vacation, because that benefits not only our registrar, but that also benefits families, because hopefully they'll be around.
And then how do you, just want to follow up. How do you get that information out to, obviously, if a family has students already in the school? I know that information comes out that way, but what about families who don't have students?
So the preschool people will get their already packets, because we asked them to sort of re-register already. And then we've, it'll be on Facebook, it'll be on...
Paper.
Our web, and we're going to put it in the newspaper also. But the go-to date to get that information out is the 15th.
Okay, great, thanks.
Chris?
I don't know if I mentioned, you talked about school choice as well. Did I mention that?
You didn't mention that.
I, you didn't, did I?
Yes, you have some work to do. Thank you, George. Before we get to the collaborative reports, we should have put it on here. A budget subcommittee has met a couple times, or, sorry, met earlier. I think we had some really good discussion about the, kind of, the long-term planning and what some of that could look like. But I think in terms of us making recommendations or asks, we'll get through the budget meeting next week, and then we can kind of, at the committee's pleasure, determine how much time we want to spend in kind of looking at, working on some of that planning going forward, so. But overall, I thought it was a, it was a good discussion earlier, unless David or Steve, you got anything to add, but overall, I think it went well.
Yeah, it was a good.
I think I'll wait until after the budget.
Yep, yep. Pilgrim Area Collaborative Report. Anything you want to report out?
So because of my agency's protocols, I was not able to be on Zoom or attend the meeting last week for Plymouth Area Collaborative. I do know, though, and I don't know if it goes back to you, Chris, the, we did share the annual report, or at least I mentioned it verbally in one of our meetings. It's in our minutes, I think, from last fall.